Good morning, everyone. Be calling this Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for April 24th, 2025 to order. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The salute to the flag is stated in the text. It's easy as simple, perfect for the shift among the citizens.
Thank you. The next item is going to be approval of the regular meeting agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one change. I'd like to, under new business, item D, consideration of pricing certificate. I'd like to move that directly under proclamations.
Second.
So I made the motion, I have a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do we have anyone for public input? Okay. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer, period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual would like to discuss an item and more, death may request it placed on a future agenda in the request forms on the manager's office. Okay? Who'd like? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Yes.
Microphone?
Yeah, just bring it down and then there's a button there, white button. Give us your name and so forth.
Jane Tucker, and I'm a resident of Grant County. I read through your minutes from your last meeting and what I saw is that you did speak about fireworks in the county. I have a few concerns about that. I read where there was an ordinance passed in the county for people basically that live out of city limits. And I don't, there wasn't much in there, so I fully don't understand what was going on. Number one, I was wondering, I know that fireworks that shoots or stays on the ground is legal, but the stuff that shoots up in the air is considered illegal? I think I'm right with that. I've noticed, we've lived in Grant County for almost nine years and have always seen the skies light up, you know, at holidays, doesn't matter if it's New Year's, Cinco de Mayo, Fourth of July. And then, you know, granted, they're fun to watch, but when you're sitting there as a homeowner in a drought, and we live in an area that burned in 2011. I wasn't here then, but I still see the damage from that fire. And I know as dry as it is, I would like to know, is there a plan for enforcement of the illegal fireworks? Because every year we see it shooting up in our neighborhood and it just makes me cringe because I worry about how easily a fire can spread. I'm wondering, I'd like to know, and I know it's not question and answer, but I would like you to really look into, what is the enforcement of illegal fireworks going to be? I personally think there should be a hefty fine on it if you get caught with that illegal fireworks and if you're shooting it up. I think there should be hefty fine and I would even be in favor of $1,000 for a fine on it because when you look around, we're not, our weather is not improving, it's getting worse. So as far as drought, so I would really be for, I don't know if it just has to be police enforcement or sheriff enforcement, but I do, I really, as a homeowner, I do feel something really needs to, you know, take part. And another thing is, is if you do see illegal fireworks being shot up, who do you call? You know, like, I don't want to just sit there from my front porch and go, oh my God, they're doing it again. Who do I call? Do we call the Sheriff's Department, dispatch? And really, when it gets down to it, I personally would even be in favor of banning all fireworks, especially in years where we've had no moisture this winter. It doesn't, who knows if we're even going to get a monsoon this year. But maybe let the city put their show on on the Fourth of July, that's always fun to watch. And that is a contained, controlled fireworks display. And, I mean, they've done it in other states where they have banned fireworks. And I think in the, the way that we're going weather-wise, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea because, man, all it takes is that one spark, as you all know. And we've had how many fires already in Silver City and the area. So it's kind of scary. But anyway, I'm just glad that I did see talk about it on the ballot. But talk is one thing, I think we need action now. So we need to know what the enforcement will be. I think the word needs to get out and, you know, because we all want to be safe, we want to have fun on Fourth of July and the other holidays. But, man, that, that fire factor is very scary. Because, and also another, there's a lot of them shoot them off and they don't care where they go. They just, you know, if you get a bottle rocket lands in somebody's trampoline and it burns a trampoline up, who cares? It's not their trampoline. But I had that happen to me once when I was living in another state. And it's not fun because my kids couldn't even play on that. And it was just a dumb thing, somebody shot illegal fireworks and, you know, there's consequences that should be, be paid. Anyway, I thank you for your time and I'm hoping, you know, the next coming couple of months, I do see some things maybe put out about fireworks and get it out to the public and say, you know, if you, if you're going to have illegal fireworks, be prepared to pay the consequences because there will be, you know, repercussions if you, if you want to disobey the law. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I shut this off or leave it on?
Just leave it on for now, thank you. Ooh, I better lift this up. Good morning, everybody. I want to thank Commissioner Flores and the board for action and stuff and along with the sheriff, he did a great job with his deputies on Lance and in Silver Acres for the community on the speeders that were very chronic. It's still a little bit of a condition going on, they're, they're still back to speeding a little bit, but they've been there several times through the week and the last, since the last month or so and they've been doing a great job. So I appreciate it. I'd like to propose a plan and it's called Camino Serna. And it's a road that runs off a fairway where the county commissioner, I mean, the county building, maintenance building is at. And it's unpaid from there to Broken Arrow. And I, I went and checked it out today. It's probably about a three-quarter of a mile run. And it's already hard-packed dirt, gravel. So it is kind of prepared already for possible paving. That would give an avenue in for first responders. That whole community goes all the way back for, seems like miles on Broken Arrow. And we've talked about this before, when I was here about last year sometime. And then Charlene Webb gave me a call personally to talk about doing a traffic study in Silver Acres to possibly pave an additional avenue. Because there's only one road in and out and that is Lance. And if you remember the fires of 2011, it was pretty severe and chaos with the fire department, police department to get in to put that fire out. And I think there are several slabs that are vacant in our neighborhood to prove what could happen. So it would be good to have a second avenue in if we can do something. I'm not sure what kind of revenues we have in the county of Grant to possibly pave that, but whatever we can do, it would be great to relieve the traffic on Lance. I actually kind of look at it, there's more traffic on Lance and Ridge than there is on 90 going to Lord's Bird, seriously. So if we can do something, we, as neighbors and community, would highly appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Chelsea Cooper. I'm the Executive Director of Silver Regional Sexual Assault Support Services and Child Advocacy Center. April is Sexual Assault Awareness, Awareness Month as long as Child Abuse Awareness Month. This week, we have hosted a human trafficking conference under the NM Grow Fund sponsored by Representative Carrasus. We were also sponsored by Freeport-McMoran, Western New Mexico University, the town of Silver City, and all of you of Grant County. So I wanted to formally thank Charlene and all of you for believing in our mission and finding value in what we have brought to the community this week. We have brought experts in the field from all over the United States, including, including the former Director of Indian Health Services under the Biden Administration, Rosalind Sau. We have had nothing but positive feedback on our conference with the need of making it even bigger next year. We have had agencies from the conference from all over the state. However, the Grant County Sheriff's Office has invested in sending the most individuals from a single agency. Last night, we also held a banquet to honor our community partners. Of the seven awards given out, two of those awards went to your law enforcement department, the Grant County Sheriff's Department. The first award went to Randy Orozco. He was awarded the Community Professional Award. And we awarded the Grant County Sheriff's Department as a whole, they were awarded the Community Partner Award. Under this administration, we have experienced collaboration unlike what we have in the past. Law enforcement has an extremely difficult job, not just because of the work they do, but also because of the lack of recognition that they get. I believe that law enforcement gets a bad rap for outcomes that are not in their control. Working with Raul and Randy over the past years, my team and I have gotten to know them closely and we know that this is not just a job to them, but a duty. Our Child Advocacy Center conducts forensic interviews for children who have experienced abuse, neglect, sexual crimes, and witnessed to a crime. This is where a lot of our interaction with Randy has taken place. I know by the many conversations with Randy that the children brought to our center are not just victims of a crime, but they are a reminder of our own children. A reminder that we have children in our community that do not have families or parents that care for them like we care for our own. So we have to, by default, be the support system for these kids and it all starts with law enforcement. The Grant County Sheriff's Office trusts us with these children as we trust that they are doing their best every day to protect the kiddos of Grant County. Law enforcement doesn't always get to see the positive outcomes with criminal cases regarding children and especially sexual assault cases. But we see these, when we see these individuals, where, when they are referred to our office, we get to see the most positive outcome, which is emotional and physical healing. Our center is working towards national accreditation, which means we follow a national protocol to provide trauma-informed services. We have a specifically trained forensic interviewer and we will have more going through training. We have advocates and therapists. We create a safe space for kids where they feel comfortable telling their story and their truth. There is a reason why forensic interviews are not conducted by law enforcement or CYFD and that is just to be trauma-informed. Past administrations have not understood the importance of this model or understood how something as simple as a neutral safe space can give children the opportunity to speak their truth. Raul and his department understand the importance of this. And so we would like to honor them.
You have one minute, Chelsea. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So once again, I want to thank you all for your support, Randy and the whole Sheriff's Department for being so easy to work with and protecting our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and we also have a bag of goodies for all of you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So we have Randy Orozco, Detective for Grant County Sheriff's Department, Community Professional Award, and then we have Grant County Sheriff's Office Community Partner Award.
Yeah, time's up, though. I mean, we should have, should have put this on presentations.
Under public input, my name is Rolto Maita, Chief Deputy Assessor, and I would just like to acknowledge that we sent out the evaluation and exit first. The last day to contest the valuation is May 1st. This is one of the most important documents that you will actually receive in your mailbox or actually email, where you have 30 days to contest the valuation if you don't agree. One of the important things about it is on what qualifications that you have for your exemptions, like your head of household exemptions, $2,000 off your taxable side. Also, your veteran exemption, and I do want to thank Misty Trujillo, the County Assessor, where we did put the $10,000 instead of the $4,000 off your taxable side for your exemption for veterans. Another thing is 100% disabled. If you're 100% disabled, you can go through the Veteran Service, get your certificate, bring it in, and we can actually honor it for the year 2025. Not only that, if you're 65 years and older with an income of combined gross income of $42,900, you qualify for the valuation fees. Once again, please, if you have any questions, come and talk to us. I've had a couple of inquiries, you know, from the, from the county office, officers here, and that's exactly what we would like. If you do have a problem and you don't have, if you don't agree with the values, please, it's very simple, you can go ahead, file the protest form, give us a value and give us an explanation why you think the value needs to be adjusted up or need to be adjusted down. And once again, I do want to thank my staff, Misty's staff in the assessor's office because we're there answering all kinds of questions. So please, give us a call at 575-574-0030. And anything when it comes down to personal property, real property, please, you have until May 1st, this document is screened, where you look at it, take a look at it. The thing is, it says it's not the tax bill. A lot of people just don't think any of it, but it's one of the most important documents that you can get about your property. So please, check it out, come in, talk to the assessor's office, and I thank you very much and have a fantastic day.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Okay, no one else. Moving on to proclamation, consideration of proclamation for National Correctional Officers' Week, Mr. Joseph Anasola.
Morning, Chairman Commissioners. Again, we're celebrating Correctional Officers' Week, May 4th through the 10th, and I want to extend an invitation to everyone here at the county for our annual Correctional Officers' BBQ on Friday, May 9th. We start about 12:30 and we feed the officers and we also celebrate the officers. Our staff do nominate each other for Officer of the Year and Supervisor of the Year, so we do celebrate that also. And then we do have a raffle for each officer in the facility. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas correctional officers and employees are capable, committed, patient, and persistent professionals, they serve admirably in correctional facilities all across the country as chaplains, teachers, counselors, officers, supervisors, managers, and directors. They help keep our citizens and communities safe. Correctional officers and employees teach, train, mentor, preach, care, and whereas the job of a correctional officer and employees is very often challenging at times, stressful, the thousands who work the correctional profession every day perform duties while within, well and with great pride. They are brave, courageous, and tenacious individuals who put their lives and health at risk every day to keep the public safe and provide a multitude of services to the nation's offenders. They have a tremendous responsibility and are owed our nation's gratitude. And whereas correctional officers and employees are most deserving of our respect, our thanks and highest praise, they are well-trained, always on watch, and prepared to meet any challenge. The men and women working in corrections make a difference in our communities. Now therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025 to be declared as National Correctional Officers' Week in honor of those who currently serve in the correctional profession and those who have served and those who have given their lives in pursuit of this most honorable occupation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion to approve National Correctional Officer Week.
Second.
So I have a second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Anasola. Appreciate what you guys have done with that jail cell. Again, thank you. Moving on to the agenda changer that was under new business is consideration of pricing certificate for 2.5 million, Grant County New Mexico General Obligation Bond Series 2025, manager?
Mr. Chairman, I want to need to Mr. Carrasco.
Chairman, members of the commission, good morning. I'm Luis Carrasco with the Rhodey Law Firm, serving as the county's bond counsel in this transaction with the New Mexico Finance Authority. Some of you know, it's, I'm a proud member of the class of 1997 of Coburn High School, so it's always a pleasure to come down and see you. I haven't met all of you in person, but wanted to give you that background and express my pleasure at being able to serve the county in this capacity. You'll recall that last month's meeting, you approved ordinance O2501, which authorized the issuance and sale of these bonds in the amount of $2.5 million to the finance authority. And as part of that ordinance, you delegated to the county manager the authority to set the final terms of those bonds within the parameters that were set forth in the ordinance. And so under the supplemental Public Securities Act statute, when you delegate that authority, the county, the pricing officer, which in this case was the county manager, has to report back to the county commission in an open meeting that the terms, the final terms as set on the pricing date did in fact comport with the parameters set forth in the ordinance. So the bonds were priced on April 11th at a maximum, at a par amount of $2.5 million, which is exactly equal to the maximum parameter you set with that respect in the ordinance. The bonds mature on September 1st of each year, beginning this year, 2025, and have a final maturity of 2044, which is not later than September 1st, 2045, as permitted by the ordinance. The bonds mature and bear interest as shown on Schedule 1 of the pricing certificate that is in your board packet and attached to the pricing certificate. The true interest on the costs, on the bonds came to 3.023182% per annum, and that's less than 6% the maximum interest rate that you authorized the pricing officer to set. And the maximum coupon on any of the bonds is 4.2.8%, which doesn't exceed the maximum you set of 5%. The bonds, as I said, are going to be sold to the New Mexico Finance Authority as a result of a negotiated sale for their par amount plus, and there isn't any original issue premium or underwriting discount, so it's just the 2.5 million less the cost of issuance of $75,000 that the county will receive for the projects to be funded by these bond proceeds. Importantly, the bonds are secured by general ad valorem taxes levied on all property within the county without limit as to rate or amount, and the bonds will be dated the date of their issuance and delivery to the purchaser, which is currently scheduled for May 2nd, 2025. As far as redemption provisions, the bonds are subject to redemption at the option of the county prior to their scheduled maturity in whole or in part on any day on or after 10 years after the closing date, so that would be May 2nd, 2035, without premium, with funds derived from any available and lawful source and in accordance with Section 4 of the bond purchase agreement between the county and the finance authority dated April 11th. So that concludes my presentation about the pricing certificate, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
County manager, do you have anything else to add? Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I do just have a clarification. So we repay the, the terms of the, of the bond through property taxes?
That's correct, yes.
And, but this, just for clarification, this doesn't mean that property taxes are going to be raised to pay this?
I, I would yield to the county manager who has better information on that, but generally, no.
Commissioner Shelby, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, no. The way that we have our bonds structured is we stay within the capacity that we have so that we don't increase property taxes. When we went to the voters on both occasions, what we, what we told the public was that we would not raise property taxes and we have not. And so we structure the sell of those bonds to make sure that we stay within those parameters and do not increase property taxes. So that's why you see the structure of these, as we've sold, we sold $2 million of 8 million that we have authorized prior to the three of you new commissioners coming on board. We're selling this amount in, of 2.5 million to make sure that we stay within those parameters and do not increase taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelby. Do we have any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
You don't have to. Thank you. Moving on to next items will be the elected official reports. Madam Clerk? Nothing? Treasurer, Mr. Khan?
I don't have anything. Chairman?
Sheriff? Ministers, I just wanted to go over real quick. I wanted to thank my staff, as you heard the presentation earlier, and I apologize that it wasn't put on the agenda, but that was kind of a surprise to us as well that we were going to be receiving these awards. I do want to recognize that my office and my investigations division, including patrol, have been very involved with SAS. Unfortunately, we have to deal with those type of calls that they get, that they're dealing with. So, you know, it takes a lot to be able to deal with calls like that. And having the support of SAS and collaborating together is making a positive impact in our community. So I want to thank Chelsea and her staff for, you know, acknowledging the hard work that my office does with them and working together. You know, I just want to continue that because they are a great, great asset to our, our community, our children, and so we want to continue doing that. But in regards to my staff, I also want to thank them for their hard work that they continue to do day in and day out. I did want to address a little bit of the concern that was brought forward in regards to the fireworks. The ordinance is out and I just want to let the public know that if they do see illegal fireworks going off, they need to contact Central Dispatch at 575-388-8840, non-emergency, and report it. And a deputy will get dispatched out to the area to look at the situation. If they do encounter and come across individuals shooting off fireworks, we're obviously going to take action. But this is something that we also collaborate with our fire departments, especially during, when it gets closer to the Fourth of July. I know the fire departments, law enforcement work together. The fire department also sends out people to patrol and be on the lookout for fireworks, illegal fireworks. But, you know, we're here to answer any questions that they have. I'd be happy to visit with them. But, you know, that's something that we will continue to do for the public. Just reach out to dispatch and somebody will get sent out to follow up and look into it. Other than that, Chairman, I have nothing else unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do we have any questions? Thank you. You know, the reason I bring that up under public input, I mean, it's a great honor and stuff to get that. You know, I wish we would have had it a little different, but that's fine. Thank you. No other elected officials, right? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, margin digit healthcare claims. I'll make a motion to approve. I have a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? I was seconded by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Okay, they've gone down pretty good significantly. I do appreciate the paperwork that was given to us. I don't know who put it in there, but it explains a lot. So, whoever did it, thank you. I appreciate that. Any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. So, moving on to preliminary budget hearing, elected officials and department heads. This is for FY twenty twenty-six preliminary budget request from all of us, and just, I don't know if any commissioner wants any other input. Far as I'm concerned, for me, I'd like to hear what you guys have to say, what you're looking at. Please, try to give us a justification. If you don't have things ready, we can put you on another agenda. Have some justifications. Let us know how it's, not just you or your department. Try to let us know how this is going to benefit the citizens of Grant County. As you understand, this is one of our biggest things this year. I hope that, you know, we can get a lot, conversation going. It's going to take some time, but I'd really like to hear, and our commissioners would like to hear from you guys. And, you know, our biggest thing is justifications. Why do you think we need this and so forth? Again, doesn't mean that this is your last shot. If you ever want to come in again and say, just shoot us an email. Make sure that we get you back on the agenda. Commissioners, do you have anything else to say on this? Okay, moving on. First one that I have here is going to be Jason Lockett, Road Department, Fleet Department, Maintenance Department.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, I have the Road Department budget in front of you. We'll go over that one first, and I'll talk about the requested increases. And if you have any questions on those as we go along, please feel free to ask. So, under equipment, maintenance, and repairs, I'm increasing that from thirty-five hundred to thirty-five thousand. We are wanting to replace ten cameras on the building down there at the Road Department. The cameras that are down there right now are very old, and you can't really see that the clarity on them is, I don't know what the pixels are on those things, but they're very old. So, we want to replace those just for safety down there and just watching the general yard of when we're not there. So, that's what that's for. Under daily work, you'll see a big increase there. So, what we're doing there is I want to add a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in there as a project for continued micro sealing on Bill Evans Road. That also increases from a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred, puts twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars more in there for just regular daily work as well. Rising material costs, and we want to replace more materials on bare roads that we have within Grant County. That's been working out really great lately for the citizens in the county. A lot of our roads are just down to rock, and so, by putting that more material on there, it really helps out. And with your all's help with helping fund a water truck recently, that really helps us in these times when it's dry right now. So, that application process is moving very smooth. Also, under bridges, culverts, and cattle guards, I'm increasing that from ten thousand to, adding fifty thousand in there from ten thousand to make it a sixty thousand. That is going to be a phased approach for our cattle guards and culverts. We've had a lot of deferred maintenance on those within the county, and we've started replacing those that we need for whenever it does rain. And so, a lot of those we're starting to clean out and get going. And so, a lot of them are so old, I've showed you pictures in the past for like, out at Brushy Mountain Road where you've changed some of those, and they're just, they only have an expected life expectancy of so long. So, we have to get those in a phased approach. Moving on to the next one is capital outlay. So, you'll see that at five hundred and fifty-two thousand, and I have the breakdown for that for you. So, we have a two thousand and thirteen F three fifty crew cab. That's a truck purchase. That will be a chassis model that we're going to use. We're going to repurpose the bed that's on there currently. So, it's a utility bed that's on there. So, that saves us quite a bit of money. So, usually those utility beds that you buy, they will go through two or three different vehicles before you have to get those replaced. And that was at sixty-five thousand. Three F one fifty four by four extended cab trucks at a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Those are fifty-five thousand each. We're going to replace three outdated trucks down there, two thousand and ten model, two thousand and nine, and a two thousand and eight model. Those trucks are just getting extremely old, and it's not worth putting any more money into those. I've requested a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for a mini excavator with a mulching head on it. That will help us out tremendously within all of our roads in the county when we go to get brush off the sides of the road and maintain our right of ways and our accesses. This mini excavator will also help with cattle guard replacements and covert replacements, something you don't have to get such a big piece of equipment out there, and it's a lot more versatile. I also have a request for sixty-four thousand for a bottom dump trailer. That bottom dump trailer can haul two to three times more than just a regular dump truck that had a ten-ton load. So, you can do twenty-two tons, twenty-four tons on that. And then, I have the last thing for the capital outlay is a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a fifty-ton hydraulic ramp transport trailer. Our current transport trailer that we have right now is a nineteen ninety-eight model, and it's had very extensive repairs done on it, and it's just, it's just aged where it's getting unsafe. So, we have that in there. Under professional services, we're taking that from three thousand to fifty-seven thousand for a total of sixty thousand. I'm adding that in there for some engineering, for some shovel-ready projects. Approximately two of those projects, we could get shovel-ready. That way, we can take advantage of projects that come along, or if the state funds some things, that we have shovel-ready projects ready to go. It's really beneficial for us that, and we can also use that for surveying as well. Under rural addressing and road signs, taking that from six thousand, we're adding thirty-nine thousand to it to a total of forty-five thousand. We want to replace old outdated signs within the county. This is a phased approach as well. A lot of ours, our signs are shot up, just not M U T C D standards, things like that. Also, traffic control signs, we're adding twenty thousand dollars into that. That's to replace and keep in stock signs that get shot up or stolen, and just to have a good general overall stock of those. That is all the increases for the Road Department. I stand for questions on that.
Commissioners, do you have any question? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you for the report. I know we've talked a little bit about the Wind Canyon residents' concern and wanting some new material added out there. And I saw, I noted that you put in there for additional material. Would that include projects like Wind Canyon? And then, and then also, I guess the second question is, earlier we heard from a person in public input about the Lance Drive and the proposal to pave that road. How do you incorporate requests like that into your budget?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stevens, yes, that, so the material would help out with Wind Canyon. That the material that we use now and with our water truck would definitely help us out to put more, you know, just make our daily work go a lot further so we can get more stuff done out there. And then, the approach for the Lance Drive and that, I think it was from Broken Arrow, you know, Serna. So, that, yes, we do take that in consideration to see what our long-term goals are for that. And as Commissioner, and so, we just want to look at maybe the traffic study out there and go forward with those kinds of things. So, yes, we can, within our budgets, we can look at that and look at doing some millings or some things out there that might help until we look and need more funding, maybe add it to an L G R F project for next year or something like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Jason, that would probably, or County Manager, that's probably more, I mean, that's, that would be an extensive project, right? That'd probably be more of a Colonias-type thing down the road?
We looked at utilizing some of our bond dollars for that project. However, we had higher priority items like deferred bridge maintenance that's going to take a chunk of that. So, I emailed you yesterday. We have a new road director starting, and so, he brings to us an extensive knowledge about being able to help us prioritize what our needs are and also maybe help us look at this through a different lens to understand, you know, maybe there's a different approach we could use. But Jason and I have talked extensively about the Wind Canyon project and trying to figure out a way to justify that because it is a very large pricey project and determining the number of users and, you know, those sort of things. And I understand their concerns, but we have to prioritize that with everything else that we've let go over a number of years.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to next item, Mr. Roger Groves, County Fire.
Do you want to meet up?
He needs to do his other departments. He needs to do his other departments, road, fleet.
I'll do the fleet and maintenance next.
He's got three departments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forget all those titles.
So, moving on to the fleet maintenance. So, I'll talk about, so this is a newly created department in the last couple of years. So, we're just adding some training. You'll see these next ones that we're going to talk about. So, the training, just adding a training budget in there of fifteen hundred dollars. So, we just need to create a training line item for the fleet department. Under uniform and vests, I have a thousand dollars put in there from zero. This covers the coveralls and safety vest for that department. And then, under a capital outlay, two hundred and eighty-three thousand. And so, that is going to encompass two vehicles for the fleet maintenance. One is a F five fifty mechanic service truck. It's replacing a thirty-three-year-old vehicle. It's hard to find parts on there right now. That price tag's at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So, you have to look at that. The mechanic service bed that's going to be on there has a crane that's installed, a welder, different things like that. That's why it's such a high price. But that mechanic's bed can last through three, possibly two to three different vehicles as you can drive another chassis under there. So, the initial, that cost is pretty much split in half between a mechanic service body and the truck to carry it. The other one is a hundred and five thousand for the lube service truck replacement. The current one we have is high mileage. The lift's wearing out. It's kind of out of DOT compliance, and it's seventeen years old. Moving on to the next one is a clothing allowance of twenty-one sixty. We've never had one in there, so just adding that in case we move forward with that clothing allowance, and that's five hundred and forty dollars times four employees. Stand for any questions for the fleet?
Questions? Commissioner Stevens?
With the clothing allowance, is that just as a way to support the employees?
Yes, so, what we do is, we have, there's a bargaining unit part that covers that, that we provide them clothing. But we also, we also just allow that for, since it's a new department, we've never had that separated out of the Road Department. So, just adding those line items in there so we can support them.
Thank you.
Okay, just no other questions?
I'll move on to the Maintenance Department. So, under the Maintenance Department, I have the telephone as an addition of two thousand dollars increase from eleven to thirteen thousand. I'm just adding that to match fiscal year projections so we don't have to do so many bar increases and internal bars. Office supplies going from five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars, or adding fifteen hundred dollars to make it two thousand for some new office chairs within our office and a portable label maker. Under mileage and per diem, we're adding fifteen hundred to that to make it three thousand. So, motel costs are going up, and we are pursuing more training opportunities. Under capital outlay for the Maintenance Department, you'll see it at two hundred and ninety-three thousand. The breakdown on that is fifteen thousand dollars for a portable welder, fifty-five thousand dollars for a half-ton facilities truck, twenty-five thousand dollars for a U T V side-by-side for grounds use at Cliff Baseball Fields and Baton Park, and eighty-five thousand dollar request for a skid steer with attachments, forty thousand dollars for a rake-o-vac, which helps us with the field out at Cliff to rake up all of the material and different things after we mow. It's kind of hard to get that stuff, and for, when the baseballs go through there, just because of the type of field it is, that's what we need to pick it up with, and it's a smaller one. Also, fifty thousand dollars for a mower for the Cliff Baseball Field, and also requesting twenty-three thousand dollars for an administration building sign and lettering. Stand for any questions for that part of that? Under non-capital equipment?
Hold on.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
A skid steer? Don't you already have one?
We have one that's, yes.
You need another one?
Yes, we are. So, what we're going to do is we're going to try to get rid of that one since it's so old and it's had so many problems.
How long have you had that one?
Since, I think it's a ninety-eight model?
You know, Jason, I have another, I have a question also along that line. We just redid one of the fields with turf at Baton Park, and I think in the past, if I'm not mistaken, we're having problems with the upkeep of the turf. We didn't have a certain piece of equipment. Have we looked into that as far as, to make sure we're not putting money into these fields and not having the proper equipment to maintain it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, there's a vacuum that you can use to go on there that redistributes the sand and the rubber pellets that are in there. And those are at lower cost. They're not that expensive as what, you know, you would see like for the big industrial mowers. Those things just kind of vacuum it up and re-separate it. And so, we can, we're going to look, we're looking at getting one of those this year, but I can, I have that out of my regular budget.
You have that in your regular budget?
For my regular budget for equipment maintenance, yes.
Okay.
I just have one other, maybe should have mentioned it in the beginning, Mr. Chairman. Jason, as we go through these, it might be useful to, for the commissioners to know, or maybe there's a different processes now that we have access to the software, the new software to look at, but comparing, okay, how much are these budgets increasing from previous years? Maybe we're going to talk about that in another meeting. And then, and then also, just to know, like, if we have a big list of new equipment that's required, it might also be useful to somehow prioritize that equipment in case it doesn't fit in the budget this year, but maybe so that it can be prioritized. We know what's the most important thing to get this year if we have to come to that decision once we look at everything.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelby. Any other questions?
Okay, I have two more line items under the Maintenance Department. So, non-capital equipment was fifteen hundred dollars, adding thirty-five hundred dollars in there for a total of five thousand. It's just to replace the aging power tools and weed eaters and different things like that. Backpack blowers, those are the things that we use a lot on our grounds. And the last one is under the maintenance contracts. I'm going to have that one at thirty-one thousand dollars. That's for fire sprinkler inspections and fire alarm inspections for the generator at the jail. And when we do weed spraying at different facilities, that's what helps us out. And so, just trying to get that money in the correct account. And that completes the Maintenance Department. I stand for any questions?
Do we have anything, Commissioners? Commissioner Florida?
Mr. Chair, Jason taking the report. Just one quick question. With all the equipment that you want to replace or you're looking to replace, do you have an anticipated return with the old equipment being auctioned? Do you have a cost of what you would get for everything, like the skid steer, the trailer, the tools, blowers, all that stuff, based on past auctions, maybe?
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Florida, it's kind of tough to say that exact thing because it depends on the market right now where we're at. And I don't think we've done a huge, huge auctions in the past. Usually, the stuff that we get rid of is, it's almost obsolete, not working. But like, for the instance here, the skid steer still does run, things like that. I could come up with an anticipated amount if you would like that.
I mean, I don't add extra work to you. It was just a question. I just think that the trucks, the trailer, I know the trailer probably has a long shelf life for a trailer, depending on what you're using it for, but of course, the skid steer, I know people are always looking for that. But a lot of the equipment you mentioned is big, big equipment, and I was just curious. You don't, I don't want to put extra work on you.
No, we can come up with that. I know that we did sell, we did auction off, it was probably two years ago. I know that we did sell, we did auction off, it was probably two years ago, an old end dump trailer, and we got approximately eight thousand dollars for that. There were some other, the trucks were around four to five thousand, three thousand if they were little Dakota trucks. Price range on those things, as far as like the backpack blowers and, and a skid steer, never really sold one of those yet. We could look what the market price is, and I could get you something if you'd like.
Give you up time, thank you.
Okay.
Are you replacing, you said a half-ton truck? What are you replacing?
It's the, it's a two thousand and ten Dodge that we have. It was an old fire truck that has the red stripe going down it. And then, after that one, our, the fleet and the, the maintenance, the maintenance fleet will be basically very good. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. I just wanted to relay to you that parts of this budget is still being built by Clergov. They're still putting in our twenty-four actuals, so it will show your comparisons of increases and decreases hopefully by the end of the week. They, they've already entered in the chart of accounts they just need in, or in the dollar amounts. So, you will be able to see that in your view only, so you should have all gotten invites yesterday that you can log in to be able to see everything in here. So, you will be able to see the comparisons.
Well, we'd be able to see also like certain departments that stayed within the budget, under their budget, what's rolling over?
Not in this system, because this is more like the forecasted. You could see how our fiscal year ended last year, their expenses total, and then you can kind of see where they're asking what they need, but you can base it off of their actuals from last year to see, you know. Right now, what's built in there is a flat budget based on last year's budget. So, if it's a lot higher, it's, um, they're asking for more. So, it's a flat-lined budget in here.
Somewhere along this process, I think we need to know who stayed under budget, who was over budget, and how much is going to roll over into the, the next fiscal year. You know, and I don't understand this system, I'm having a hard time with it.
Yeah.
It's probably, I'm just going to have to take the time and sit down and go through it, but we'll, we'll get there.
So, we can run you those budget reports, but it goes along the same lines. If he's asking, you'll be able to tell by looking at this where the year ended and what they're asking for, and we don't automatically roll things over. But if you're talking about like our ending cash balance and beginning cash balance, that will come at, so we project those in your final prelim, you'll see that then. So, we work on those, and that's how we, what we look at. That's what I asked the finance department to give to me so I know what we need to start cutting, and so, we'll make some initial cuts probably before the prelim comes to you. Like, some of these things, I know we can't afford all of this, we already know that. So, you'll see that information that you're looking for, that'll be in that final prelim budget that you see. And so, what he's talking about with the money rolling over is your ending cash becomes your beginning cash, and so, we have to make sure that we have adequate beginning cash balances to make sure that we meet all of our requirements, have some in reserves, required reserves plus some. So, that's, that means, and you'll, you'll get that. So, this is just the very first step.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate this, this first step. Sort of what I like to look at at the end of the day is, you know, why something wasn't approved? Do we have the money? Can we look at somewhere else where we can get that money? And that way, the commissioners can look at what priorities they have for this budget because if anything, this is our biggest responsibility, is this budget. And, you know, we, sometimes we don't have a lot of authority on other things, but this one we do, and I'd like to see, you know, what we can afford is, well, I understand if we don't have money, but what are we looking at? You know, where do we have money? What rolled over? What did they save in their budget? Because I'm also partly looking at, somebody stays within their budget or under their budget, that's frugal. I think sometimes those departments need to be, for lack of better words, patted on the back and said, hey, okay, you stayed, you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, let's continue this. And, and I'd like to see that to understand it a little bit more. Harrison?
Do that like we always do, and we'll recommend, these are what we recommend cutting because you don't have the money. So, that'll be in your next chair, rec session, and me.
No, that sounds good, and I know you guys always do a good job. I just, getting older and I forget a lot of things, so.
Well, we've also had one-on-one department head meetings, we've addressed the budgets with each department. We've covered the status of their budgets and where they have shortfalls and items like that where they need to do a local bar within their funds with their approved budget. So, we have been working on those within the last month, and we've made a lot of progress, and most of them are within their budgets, and they're very, very in tune to their budgets, and I appreciate all of them. They work really hard to stay on track of what they're doing and their day-to-day, you know, operations, and I just want to let you know, all the department heads are really taking it seriously, and they do a great job.
Yeah, and, and at the end of the day, I guess one of my biggest things is that especially like the elected officials, that they don't get a solid no until it comes up here and we say yes or no. Because I understand elected officials, when you go out there, you tell your constituents, there's certain things you're going to do for them, and I know I don't have, we don't have much say-so as far as the directors, but as a budget, we do. And, you know, it, it's, what is the commission going to say no to? And that's our, that's our job to say no. That's why I sort of look at the justifications, why can't we do this or why can't we do that? Anything else, Commissioners?
None.
Done, Jason?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
All right. Moving on to now, County Fire.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, our, our fire departments are funded through the State Fire Marshal's Homeland Security District, Fire Protection Fund distributions, and we haven't received our awards for FY twenty-six yet, but I can give you some numbers from last year. It will not be lower than that. All indication is that we will all be receiving higher amounts this year. So, the total last year that was brought in for Grant County totals was two million ninety-one, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, and that was distributed to the eight volunteer departments and Grant County Fire Admins. So, my part of that, it was one hundred and one thousand, one twenty-eight, which I refer to as my operating funds. Mine increases as the departments increase, so we do know that Cliff Hila got an improved ISO rating. They're going to go up, which mine will go up as well as my distribution for FY twenty-six. What I might want to do is come back when we get that award, and I will share that information with the commission so you can see what each department is getting. But their awards are based on their ISO ratings that we have to go through inspections on a pretty regular basis annually. Fire marshals are coming in, and our folks from ISO, which is the insurance services organization who rates the fire departments, and that's how they're, they're funded, based off of their ISO ratings, so. I specifically plan to work within my operating funds. I don't have any additional requests for other funding at this time, but having conversations with Mr. Fuller and Andrea, we've identified where we need to work on some improvement for our communications, radio repeaters and towers and whatnot. And so, I would allocate some of the funds from my operating budget to go toward that. And I have a meeting with Andrea on Monday to look at where we're at as far as rolling, any funds rolling over for our VFDs, and their requests are trickling in. I, I do know that there'll be some requests for station improvements, water system improvements, water towers, water storage, apparatus. As you know, previously, we, we did do very well in the grants last year, and those grants are available to every fire department in Grant County if they apply, which I am strongly encouraging every one of them to apply every year. Whether they get it every year remains to be seen. So, mine's more or less of a flat budget based on the funding that we're going to receive from the State Fire Marshals, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next one would be Scott Fuller, Emergency Management.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I should know most of, half my salary and budget is paid through the Emergency Management Performance Grant through FEMA, so I'll be applying for that again usually in May or June that comes out, and be applying for that, and it's usually pretty much a pass-through as long as you complete your application correctly. And as for extra stuff, like Chief Groves said, you know, we, in the last few months, we've identified a lot of communications problems in the, in the county, and just want to make sure we have some money to make sure we can address those. Like I said, we've had, like I said, the last two months, Sappio Creek, Lake Roberts, lower members, all their communications equipment, it was really, really in bad shape, and a lot of stuff needs to be replaced. And of course, you know, Commissioner Medina, we know we're having problems, you know, up there on Lower PA, so. So, just make sure we have some money so we can keep up maintenance up on these, on our communications equipment. What I'm looking at is, you know, stuff's been sitting there for ten years and never had any maintenance on it, and with any equipment, you can't put something somewhere for ten years and turn your back on it and expect it to keep working. It's not going to happen. And another issue, I think I addressed this with Andrea, and set up a, a fund, a disaster fund and accounts, and put a dollar in it. So, if we ever have an issue or disaster, the accounts are already set up, and as County Manager Webb, we've been addressing some reimbursements from the floods from twenty-twenty-two because there wasn't very good accounting then during that, during that disaster. So, we're going to, we're going to get the reimbursements, but it'd be nice that if we had that set up so something does happen, we already had that line items, those things set up, so when we go to get reimbursements, it'll all be there, and it'll be easy to track. Right now, we're still chasing that down, time sheets and time and, and information from three years ago, so makes it kind of hard. Just some food for thought. Looking for any questions?
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you for the report. I was just curious with some of the uncertainty regarding federal funds and FEMA, if you anticipate any change with that funding source?
Do not anticipate any, any changes with those funding sources. I know they just cut out all the brick funding in the last couple of weeks. There was something out about that. They just totally stopped that, but I don't think anything they're doing is going to impact anything that we're doing here in the county.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Scott, that I do create that fund, and it is up to the commission then to put budget into it, so that it's already been created.
Very good. I just, I just know from the past, that's, that's been trouble with other municipalities and counties in the past, they didn't think it through, and when it did happen, they had to, it's easier just to have it there, maybe a dollar put in it.
Thank you. We're good on that one? Moving on to Joseph O'Leary, Planning Department?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. The Planning Department more or less remains a flat budget. Like my colleagues, I feel a very strong responsibility to remain fiscally responsible in dealing with taxpayer money. So, our largest reoccurring expense, just for some background, is, is really our maintenance agreement, which is for our large format plotter slash scanner. When we have individuals come in, contractors, we work with the clerk's office whenever we receive plots, and we have to scan those and get those into the system to make sure they're archived. That is a, we do have an agreement with our service providers, so that does remain unchanged, but just wanted to give a background in there just because, like I said, it is one of the, the higher-priced items in there. I did ask our staff in the department to look at professional development opportunities. I do feel this is valuable to invest in our assets, and, and also, it helps the counties operate as efficiently as we can. So, I think that's good. It helps us understand current trends. You know, I think sometimes while we, I love living in this remote area, sometimes it can feel like we're a little bit on desert island at times, so it's a little hard to see what's going on in the outside world, so I think those professional development opportunities are critical. The one thing that we are working with or working on right now, we haven't entered this adjustment yet, but we're needing to upgrade our ArcMap, ArcMap software. Our ArcMap software is what we do to assign rule addressing, create maps for our community members and businesses that come through. So, this is a critical thing. I've already been in discussion with Mr. Baca, our IT Director, about how we're going to cover those costs, and this is a necessary upgrade, so I do ask for some support on this if possible. ESRI is going to discontinue support on that product next year, so our next fiscal year anyway, so, you know, this twenty-six budget will directly impact that. So, that's really our only request for the year, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions? You good? Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Baca, IT, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The few line item requests I have here, I'll start with the lower significance items, one of them being our office supplies. Now that I have a network administrator and an IT specialist, there's an anticipated greater need for office supplies such as chairs and things along those lines that we'll need throughout the year, requesting an increase of four hundred dollars on that GL. And as regards equipment and maintenance, I'm requesting an additional five thousand in order to keep up with the maintenance of all our machines, printers, wireless access points, things along those lines for all the buildings within the county that we support. Moving on to some more significant line items, in particular, under our maintenance contracts, here I'm requesting a hundred and thirty thousand in order to move us away from the Google Workspace environment and on to the Microsoft Office three sixty-five environment. And the primary goal here is to make sure that the entire county utilizes the same platform for our office productivity through email, file sharing, document storage, things along those lines. We do have Google Workspace at present, but we are finding that we've come across multiple roadblocks on certain aspects of business that Office three sixty-five can offer us. So, the ability to retain information when an account is disabled, for example, if an employee moves on, the ability to store that information and utilize it later, under the assumption there's ever an IPR request, requesting information regarding that particular account, we'll have a greater ability to pull that out of archives, and that's just one example of some of the benefits with moving to the Office three sixty-five platform. Another thing that we deal with within our department, within the IT department, is making sure that we have the Google Workspace environment as secure as we can, but it also has to tie in with a Microsoft environment, which is the dominant environment within the IT world. So, basically, what it's creating is for us an unnecessary maintenance burden on trying to secure two environments. So, it just makes sense that we move over to a single platform that everybody uses. This will allow us- This will allow us to authenticate or log in properly into all the applications that we utilize. Most applications that we buy sync up with Office 365. So it'll allow us to have one count, one account to log into the multiple different tools we have, as an example. And that'll help us to streamline that method as well. The other line item I'm requesting is $145,000 for our migration of our Eagle services. This is for our clerk's office, treasurer's office, assessor's office, moving that service into the cloud. As you know, we've done that with our ERP Pro, our financial and HR and payroll environment. We're in the midst of finishing that up right now. But what I'd like to do is move the Tyler Eagle services off of physical servers in our server room and move that over to Tyler Technologies. If that information resides on their server infrastructure, it takes the maintenance burden away from us here locally at our site. So that's less we have to maintain as far as our server infrastructure goes, less that we have to worry about as far as keeping that environment secure, and less that we have to worry about regarding backups. So that's the, another request I have. The final request I have is some information that I received yesterday, and this is regarding, we're at an opportunity where we can modify our backup environment. We do have a backup environment right now for our server infrastructure, and we've had that for several years now. But come the end of this fiscal year, we have the opportunity to move away and select a different solution. So I've already worked with some vendors on some solutions that are available. And the one in particular that I'm interested in will have a much greater capacity to allow us to retain backups for a longer period of time, and also the ability to back up not only our server infrastructure, but also some of our desktop and laptop infrastructure as well. We have a couple of machines here and there that have specific setups, and it would definitely be beneficial for us to back up those machines in case they crash. So we don't have to worry about rebuilding something that was complicated. We can rely on rebuilding via backups that are constantly happening on those particular specific setups. That'll definitely help us in our environment. So those are the line items I have requested. Stand for any questions.
Just, I do have a question, just for clarification.
Yes.
The Tyler system is part of our accounting. Is that correct?
Yes, that's on the record right now.
Okay. And I guess if we are migrating, right now, we have that software, but we run it on our own servers and you're proposing that we put it on their servers in the cloud?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Shelley, that's correct. Right now, our database for our Eagle environment, it sits on a physical server in our server room. So we would be migrating that data and upgrading to the latest software that they offer, as well as additional services that we don't have in place right now. Just by virtue of moving to their cloud environment comes additional opportunities and solutions that they offer just inherently with the latest offering of their services. So yes, it does involve copying our database and migrating it over to their server infrastructure.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Stevens?
I just want to clarify with the maintenance contracts, you know, that's a, it's almost $600,000 and that would be an increase. And it would be primarily to move from Google to Microsoft 365. Is that right?
That is one of the heavier loads.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mr. Andesola, Detention Center.
Following is the Detention Center budget. It's along the lines with the five-year plan discussions and also discussions we discussed at annual inspection. There on the clerk love map, there was, there was a slight on the first of salaries that Andrea is aware of, and we did work on that. So we're requesting $2,168,936 for salaries, and that's something that we've been working hard on, the County Manager's Office, Finance, Andrea, HR. That is on HR's worksheet. Andrea is aware of the glitch and we're going to fix that. So that is something we did on salaries for retention, something very important at the facility, to develop that retention at the facility so we could keep that constant operations going in the facility and also start working on that succession plan as we start losing the experience we do have at the facility. Next is our maintenance contracts. We do have a slight increase. We're requesting $69,394. What the maintenance contracts are is for Apex Solutions. And I did put notes and I did attachments for the quotes on there, and the quotes do give a pretty thorough explanation of each. So what the maintenance contracts are is it's preventive maintenance for our camera systems and our card reader systems, making sure the cameras operating, they clean them, they repair them, they do several visits throughout the year. And also on our PLC systems, which is our master control, our female control and our male control, that control the doors, the sliders, the gates, the locks, and the camera system. So that's prevent maintenance, and it has a slight increase from last year. One of the new things they did with that maintenance contract too is they're providing the lifespan for each piece of equipment. We do include IT on all these different things. And when they do the preventive maintenance, we do have a report we do share with IT. So on contractual services, there's a slight increase, and those increases are for a new PLC system, which I just explained is the one that operates master control and the backup system, which is a female control, and that controls all the doors, locks, sliders, and such. The end of life was this year, 2025. I did get with IT and we discussed it, and I think now's the time to replace those systems because it is at a zero lifespan. Also, there is new software for our body scanner. We have had our body scanner in the facility for approximately three years. Previously to having the body scanner, it was quite difficult to detect any contraband within the facility, and we did have several overdoses within the facility. But due to our staff and medical responding quickly to those overdoses, we were able to bring the detainees back and get them transported to the emergency room. We have had the body scanner the last three years, and that's been a significant increase in the security of the facility and operations for the facility as we're able to catch contraband with that body scanner upon intake. And we're able to, we've been able to cap, cut contraband and give it to law enforcement with that body scanner. However, like I said, we do have a lot of new young staff that are learning, and oftentimes have to depend on administration to go in and look at that body scanner to detect any contraband. However, there's a new upgrade for the body scanner that's utilizing AI and has an automatic anomaly detection. It'll tell officer that there is an anomaly there. And what that AOS software will also do is continue to learn and teach the officers. So it's something that takes out of human error with that body scanner upon all intakes to capture that contraband and avoid any contraband coming into the facility. That approximately is $14,845. The new PLC system for the, for the master control and female control is $85,000, and we keep in contact and put that in our five-year plan to keep that, making sure the years of life and service with our IT department. Another increase we're requesting is for vehicles, equipment and maintenance. We are replacing our vehicle fleet out there. We do have a new unit for officers to use. We're requesting additional $7,900 to install a cage within that unit so we could transport detainees in a safe, secure manner and keep the detainees safe and officers safe also. I'm open to any questions.
Going back to the beginning, what, what did you say you have on, on your increased salary increase?
So if you look at their salary increase is $2,168,936. That's a difference of $812,311. I know that the County Manager and the HR worked on that to have something that's viable for the increase, but can be viable for years to come. So I think we came to a conclusion that the pay is going to be increased slightly, but not nothing that'll really hurt the budget of the county. Currently, we're starting officers at $16 an hour, and with this increase, we're going to start them at $17.53. And we do have very few that have years of service over five, six years of service, and we're looking at them giving an increase also to continue that retention within our facility.
You know, I guess what I struggle with is we have so many, you know, I think our budget, isn't it, our total budget, like $4.3 million for detention center somewhere in there? We have so many mandates by the state that this needs to be done, that needs to be done. You know, some of those mandates are good, but I guess what really, you know, I look at is we spend so much money, taxpayers' money, in doing this, which is right. I don't have a problem taking care of the inmates that are there and giving them what they need. But the one that really hurts me is that our corrections officers that are there aren't getting paid and they're the ones responsible to make sure that this is happening and that we're complying with the state mandates. So I'd really like to see something occur here with your detention officers and getting better paid because at the end of the day, they are saving us money and liability, you know, and they're being trained, and you're doing a very good job to do that. I couldn't see and understand, you know, a union, but I couldn't see a union objecting to something that's going to better their other employees, their own members. If they do, then I, I think that they're on the wrong path because they should be happy with, with somebody trying to better, get better wages. So I really would like to see something happen in that. I'd like to see the retention there. I'd like to see the salaries go up. I don't know what, at this present time and moment, I don't know what we can afford and can't afford. But a lot of people don't understand either, detention officers have a harder job than law enforcement officers. Law enforcement officers will go drop off whatever problems they have and they leave as long as they have the proper medical clearance, proper paperwork. It's the detention officers that have to deal with them. Law enforcement officers can take breaks, can go visit their family, can have lunches, can do this. Detention officers are there for as long as their shift is there, and they're dealing with what they need to deal with. So I've always had a problem, especially when we did our jail inspection with the paperwork that you showed us and their wages. I just wasn't happy with that. So I hope that our staff and our finance and our county manager really look at what we can do for that. So, but I appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Chairman, and that's something we want to look at because also with that retention piece comes a fully staff piece. Oftentimes, we're kind of shorthanded with that lack of retention. So the staff are sometimes working 16-hour shifts and also volunteering on their days off to come in and help out, which I think we realize that days off are important and try not to have those officers work 16-hour shifts constantly because that's a long time to be in that facility for 16 hours.
No, I appreciate it and appreciate what your staff does. Commissioner Stevens, you had something?
Yes, thank you for the report. An explanation. I noticed that, I think it was care of prisoners or the detainees, it was like $950,000.
Yes.
And I was just wondering, that's an increase. So what's the bulk of that, like?
I left that budget flat from last year.
Oh, it was flat. Okay. I thought it was an increase. Thank you.
Commissioner Shelley?
Mr. Chairman, Joseph, I, I appreciated several things that I've heard from you and also other, other departments that have presented, things that, to me, are the priority, are how can, what kind of budget items do we need to reduce liability for the county and, and to improve safety for our citizens, prisoners, all of them. So as we, as we go through our budget process, I'm, I'm really interested in hearing and understanding, well, if we do this, it'll reduce liability in this way, especially at the, at the detention center and the sheriff's department, people who, those, those jobs in our county seem to be where a lot of lawsuits and other things occur. So training, et cetera. I know that's a big deal at the detention center as well. And I, is there any change or budget needs for additional training at the facility that you're including that I missed as you presented?
We did leave that budget flat. We do, the facilities work really hard at trying to work with the New Mexico counties and they offer a lot of free training, so we just have to pay for per diem and stays. And we also do, we host a lot of training, and oftentimes if you host a training, your training's free for your facility. So we've hosted several trainings in the past. And also, within our RACE program, they do offer training for that also that the state will pay for. So we try to really spread it out and get people trained up and work with New Mexico counties and work with different agencies and host that where we get those free training spots. I know that law enforcement and detention is ever changing and always dealing with new things and having to learn new technologies and like Commissioner Ponce just said, there's always all these mandates and oftentimes unfunded mandates you have to follow that are new. So it's an ever continuous changing environment that you have to just keep up with, and sometimes it's very difficult to get away with you. But one of the things we do work hard on is we work with our maintenance director and our IT director. We try to plan things out five years at a time and kind of spread it out so we replace things within certain timeframes and make sure we have what we need, but kind of spread it out so we're not doing everything in one swoop and trying to fiscally be responsible and develop that plan and make sure that we stick to that plan. That way, we're, we're being a little bit more conservative with the money and spreading that over that five-year plan.
Thank you. I, I think that's all my questions for now.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Guess not. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Yoke, Dave.
Next will be our airport, Rebecca.
Chairman and Commissioners, for this next year, we have, I've requested $500 increase in telephone, and that's just reflecting what we're actually spending this year. I asked for $3,000 extra in equipment maintenance. We have several pieces of new equipment that we wanted to make sure we're maintaining. Like I said, it was an investment that the community made for us, so I want to make sure that we're staying good and keeping that equipment good. As far as capital, I've requested $146,000. Need glasses to see. $65,000 was for an emergency generator for our administrative building. Currently, if the power goes out, we can't open the hangar doors. So that's kind of a problem for us. So I'd like to get an emergency generator. I requested $76,000 for an equipment storage building. Right now, we are keeping all of the equipment we have inside one of our hangars, so the space we're not able to lease out at this time. And we would also be able to move our sweeper, which is in our ARF bay, into that building. We're getting a new ARF truck so that we can have both of those trucks in one building. And then I asked for $5,000 for an access door, so from our administrative building, getting into our small hangar, that way we're not going out around the building to get into it. I had a $5,000 reduction in my equipment lease. We have a new agreement with our supplier and our costs have actually gone down. And then I asked for $3,500 extra for our AWAS. That's our weather reporting system. It's a ground air and it's also a telephone where people can call in, get that information. And then finally, $500 more for uniform vests is just the cost of supplies as far as the equipment that's got to. Stand for any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Cory Cabinos, Ms. Kim.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So Cory Cabinos is on a federal fiscal year, so anything you might see currently is just rollover from what was approved in October. So I don't have any budget line items present to you. I won't have anything until August. I will be attending the NMDOT Budget Award Recommendation Meeting on May 30th, and I do have my preliminary recommended total award amounts. I can give... and I do have my preliminary recommended total award amounts, um, I can give you today. So, um, my recommended amount for my admin budget is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, my operating budget is eight hundred and forty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty and one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in capital, which is a fourteen passenger bus that, that we have applied for. Um, the total cash match for that is five hundred and two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. My only really budget request for you today is the eighty thousand dollar portion, um, Grant County's portion of our, of our cash match. I stand for any questions or?
I'm thinking here. I, I guess what I'm trying to, since you're here and I know you don't want to stay here for, for my commissioners' comments or reports, but been getting a lot of calls and concerns from our public since some of our veterans in Alderley, the transportation, they, they can't hire people, some of the funding has been cut. I know that Grant County, because of our anti-donation clause, I know you guys are in, in a federal system, so I'm asking, I guess, our county staff, county manager, you is to see if we can come up with something creative. I don't, I've banged my head against the wall trying to help, well, you know, our, our citizens, especially our elderly and our veterans that can't get to certain things and certain appointments just because of, you know, what I mentioned earlier. So just putting that in your, in your mind, seeing what we can do. I, I don't see what we can do as far as the county, but Sardine's giving me some, some good ideas on how we may be able to approach this. But if there's anything that you can come up with or think of or something you can work on, I'd really appreciate that. And that, that's just a comment, not even a question.
And, and if I can ask, um, is it appointments out of Grant County or is it within?
Some of them are within Grant County, some of them are without, uh, outside of Grant County. I know that's one of the vans I think was sent up to Albuquerque because they can't get anybody to drive it and transport our veterans, uh, so they don't have any. I know we ran into that problem and I think, and I don't know where it's at, but I'll talk to Sardine about that later. So we need to figure out or come up with, try to come up with something to try to help. And, and I don't know, I look at Cory Caminos Transportation, you know, I look at our laws as far as anti-donation, I look at all that, but, uh, any ideas or anybody or anybody's door that I can knock on, please let me know.
Okay.
So based on our conversation, are you, you're looking for funding so that they don't have to pay for transportation or can you clarify my notes so Kim can help us?
Funding, yes. I mean, I'm trying to figure out what's the easiest way or what can we do to help some of these people get to their appointments or get to, or they need to get. So I, I know you, you gave me a great idea, maybe I just need to knock, knock on doors further up north, but, uh, any idea that anybody can come up with, I, I'd really appreciate it because we're, we're going through a hard time with that right now.
So we do have our demand service within, within Silver City, um, where we, it's only two dollars per stop, um, where we can transport them. Um, there is some limitations because we do only have one bus, one driver per day and our schedule does fill up, but we also do have days where we have availability. So I think maybe that's just, uh, a, a training for the public. We've always had challenges with advertising and how to get that information out to the public, but we do have somewhat limited services available and it's only two dollars. Um, and we can explore maybe ways to help them pay for that if, if the two dollar per stop fee is an issue. Um, but again, we do, we do fill up occasionally or actually more frequently. Um, but, but we do have that available. And that's only within Silver City right now, just because of bus shortage, driver shortage, funding issues, we don't offer that service, um, in Santa Clara Bay or Hurley, but we do deviate on the route that runs into Santa Clara Bay and Hurley and that's free. We don't charge, we don't charge passenger fares on that route. So deviations up to a quarter of a mile are possible and we do look at if, if you need to get to Silver Healthcare or, or HMS or what, you know, whatever's over there, we will, we will accommodate and do our best to help you get there.
With the right budget, can it be, can it be extended to Santa Clara Bay or Hurley?
It can be. We used to run, um, demand service, um, but it just became so burdensome with, with our limitations on our budgeting. And that's something that is going to have to be talked about, um, with my next grant application is, um, Grant County's been giving us eighty thousand dollars pretty consistently, I want to say for ten years. Um, and before that, I think it was seventy. So there is going to be, we are going to have to look at a cash match increase just with the cost of everything going up, but that's certainly something we can discuss is, you know, I can always apply for more money with DOT. It's just the match monies that, that we're trying to keep from burdening the, the communities we serve. Our, our cash match, our total cash match amount for my current budget is five hundred and two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. So, you know, that comes from primarily Grant County, Town of Silver City, Demming and Luna County. So with additional funding, we can apply for additional funding, um, with additional match monies.
Okay. No, that, that's, that's a good idea. That's something that, that our board, I guess, would have to really look at and discuss, but I'm just trying to help these people because I don't think it's getting any better on the, on the federal side with, it's so much the uncertainties that we don't know what's coming, what's not, and it changes daily, it seems like. So I'd like to really see that, uh, at least we put some effort and try to come up with something.
Sure. And there is a new service available, fairly new service here in Grant County. Um, I think it's called Silver Shuttle Service and I can, um, send that information to the, um, manager's office and they can post that. We refer people to that all the time if it's something we can't help them with. And then there's always, um, non-emergency medical transportation services as well, which is cumbersome for a lot of people because most of them only accept Medicaid, Medicare. They, they don't accept self-pay. Um, but there are, there are other services out there. It's just, again, people don't know they're out there.
Okay. Well, maybe we need to, uh, figure out some way to get it out there, whether it's through you guys, through us, through the Health Council, anything. But I really appreciate your, your comments and yeah, we can work on that and see where we go.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Stevens?
Uh, thank you for your service and your report.
Um, I, a long time ago, I told people, students mostly, that the reason why the bus route, um, the bus routes were at low charge was because of American Rescue Plan money. And maybe that was true at one point, but it sounds like it would be more accurate now to say it's from all the combined funding that Cory Caminos gets. That's why it's free to ride as long as you stay on the normal route. Is that correct?
That's correct. So initially, um, we did go fare-free, um, during the, the pandemic, um, partially, once we started running again, to, to help build ridership back up, but also, you know, there was a huge financial burden, a lot of people who were out of work through the, through the pandemic and, um, we were able to, to offer that service fare, fare-free and we've, we've learned that we, it's more beneficial to, to residents to continue to offer that, uh, you know, for free. Um, our fare revenue is not going to make a dent in our, in our budget anyway. Um, I mean, it always helps, but we, we plan on continuing to run fare-free and that's just to help benefit the community.
Thank you.
Thinking or no?
No.
Thank you, Kim. Sardine, I don't see Daniel.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Staff members, not hearing other, other applications, but his program is a hundred percent ground-funded, so there's not anything there that you would have to approve other than his application?
Thank you. Moving on to our chair, Raoul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just have two requests and I'll have some discussion on other items that I did not include in my budget request. Uh, the Grant County Sheriff's Office is respectfully requesting consideration for the approval of a new office assistant within the Civil Process Division to assist with daily operations and support the administrative lieutenant. This position would be instrumental in managing essential day-to-day tasks, including answering phones, scheduling transports, inputting civil paperwork, civil paperwork into the new CAT system. With being that we got the new CAT system, now that we log in our, our documents with our subpoenas, RITS, um, transport, um, all that has to be documented in our new CAT system. So if we get calls from the public requiring or requesting what the status is of their, their paperwork, um, the assistant or the secretary can just look it up and find out what the service, uh, process has been, been like with that. Uh, and also performing various administrative duties. Additionally, the assistant would assist the administrative lieutenant in maintaining several important grants such as LDWI, STEP, OHB, FAU, and Stone Garden. Those are very, uh, consuming grants that we have, but we're fortunate to have because we get a lot of funding out of them. Currently, the supervisor of the Civil Division must spend an increased amount of time in the office managing documentation due to a significant rise in court paperwork. This shift reduces their availability for field operations. By establishing this new position, the Civil Division would be able to operate more efficiently and allowing civil deputies to focus on field work instead of administrative tasks like data entry, transport, scheduling, and processing RITS. These administrative responsibilities consume a tremendous amount of time and detract from the deputy's ability to serve both the courts and the community effectively. For the Civil Division to function optimally, a minimum of five deputies is required. However, due to ongoing staffing shortages within the Sheriff's Office, maintaining that level has been challenging. Creating an office assistant position would be a cost-effective solution compared to hiring or transferring a full-time deputy into the Civil Division. It would allow for better use of resources, enabling sworn personnel to prioritize law enforcement and civil service duties. Thank you for your time and consideration for that.
The second request I have is, uh, I am requesting assistance from the County Commission in providing funding to continue our DARE program. For the past fifteen years, a generous individual from our county had, has donated thirty thousand annually to help keep this program running. Unfortunately, this donor has left our county and is no longer able to provide this donation. There is a vital community initiative dedicated to empowering the children of Grant County with the knowledge and tools to make safe, healthy, and responsible choices. Support from our commission will greatly impact our ability to continue providing for the children in our community. We interact with children at schools and are highly requested by community at events involving our children. Beginning in two thousand and ten, this program has positively impacted our community. Since then, approximately four thousand one hundred children have participated in the program and many community events have utilized our services. The local schools have been receptive to this program and look forward to it every year. Currently, the program is active in nine of our community schools. We're also reaching out to our local businesses and community members for assistance with funding. Without the support and funding, this program will not be able to continue and that will be a detrimental loss to our children and our community. Your support of this program will be greatly appreciated. So those are the only two requests that I put in my budget, but I did also want to talk a little bit about the salaries in our, in my office. As you are aware, uh, it's been hard to recruit. Um, we did, we are fortunate to have recruiting and retention funding, but even that hasn't been helping them because of the fact that that is just, uh, an incentive to recruit them, but not to maintain them because of the, the salary that we currently have. So I didn't put that in there because I have been in communication with the county manager and, and we're hopeful that we're able to work something out. She's been very, uh, instrumental in, in, uh, trying to get us to where we need to be. So I, I want to thank her for that and her, uh, looking into that as well. So that's why I did not include it in there because I know that something's in the works. Um, but it has been, um, it has been challenging to try to recruit. In regards to, um, other funding requests, mandates that we have, I, I'm fortunate, I diligently work on applying for grants and getting funding from the state and, and the congressional districts. Uh, we were able, we do receive funding through the Law Enforcement Protection Fund, which I have communicated with Sardine on. Uh, in, in managing that, that funding, uh, I moved a lot of that money into capital to where we're able to purchase things for the office that are required, like units or, or equipment. Uh, I have moved a substantial amount of money into our training budget, which is helping me to be able to train my staff and help them, uh, do their job a lot better for our community. So that grant has been helpful. So it saves, it's a cost savings to the county and, and me requesting it. Um, unfortunately, you all know that in law enforcement, a lot of the things that we deal with are unpredictable. So, um, I've been very frugal with my budget the last two years. I try to stay within budget, you know, but some items are, we can't predict what's going to happen. Main, main one is overtime and the other one is, we don't know what happens with those things. But I left my budget, the rest of my budget flat for that reason because I ha, I feel that right now we're, we're within, we're within budget and my, my concentration in is to hopefully help myself, my staff with their salaries, to help them to recruit, I mean, to retain them. I have, um, a lot of experience, I have a lot of young ones as well, but whatever we can do to help them, um, I, I ask for your support on that. Um, other than that, that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Commissioner Stevens?
Uh, thank you, uh, for your report.
And I, I just was curious, somebody sent me an article recently about how, I think it was up in northern New Mexico, the sheriff's department had switched to a four-day work week and it had really helped with retention and recruitment. And I have no agenda or strong feelings about it, but I was just curious if that's something your department, do you guys talk about that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stevens, thank you for the question. That is something that I would not consider and for the fact is that this community depends on public service from law enforcement. As it is right now, we cover and assist other municipalities that don't have, um, staffing and if we, we were to do that and not have no law enforcement at all in the community for certain days, that'd be a detriment to our community as well. Uh, currently, um, we are staffed and I do, we do run twelve-hour shifts for my staffing to provide the twenty-four hours, seven-day-a-week coverage. So that's not something that I would really even consider. I mean, we're, we're strapped as it is. All, all agencies around this county are, are hurting for staffing as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shelley?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you for your report, Sheriff. Mr. Chairman, I, can you clarify how much you're requesting in your budget to, from, from the county to fund DARE?
So I, I submitted for twenty thousand, um, but like I say, uh, I mean, I'd be happy to receive that because that's pretty much, that's a, a ten thousand less from what the donor was giving, you know, but I can, we can manage doing different things and how we operate that funding. And I'm hoping that the community support comes in and I also, like I say, uh, it's us and the Silver City PD that do this, DARE, through the schools. And I have reached out to the chief of police for them to also request funding from, from the city to help us out because we've been sustaining this program for the last fifteen years. The city provides an officer, but we, we're the ones that supply everything for the training and everything that goes on with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Do you want me to question, how many civilian personnel do you have on your payroll?
Civilian personnel, I have two court security, three, uh, and three, uh, office assistants.
Three office assistants?
Yes. Which one is my executive? And then I have one that oversees the court, I mean, oversees all the operations as far as payroll and everything that interacts with our office. And then I have the receptionist in the front that greets the public.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Flores?
Mr. Chair, Sheriff, thank you for the report. Just one question. Are, are you, are you able to tap into the recruitment and retention fund that the state is giving all law enforcement agencies?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Flores, for the question. Yes, um, we have been utilizing that funding for, for recruiting and retention, but, uh, based on the grants, they're, they broken down into three years and ev, each year is a different amount that we get to utilize. that we get to utilize out of it. And I think as far as our recruitment fund, we've probably already expended. Our retention is, I'd have to get the exact number from manager's office to see where we're at with that, but yeah, unfortunately, those expire in three years and I would think we're already in year three of that grant.
Do you anticipate, I mean, I anticipated that they, I think it's been a success and we utilize it, but do you think that they're going to, it's going to be reoccurring once it expires? I mean, we can't tell the future, right? But I'm hoping it does.
Correct. Commissioner Flores, I am very hopeful that the state sees that how it has benefited a lot of our agencies. Unfortunately, the facting about that is that you can retain them, but they're given a stipend, it's not part of their salary. And a lot of law enforcement looks at salary. And I get it, you know, they want to get paid more money, being that surrounding agencies and the state have drastically increased their salaries, so it makes it very competitive. And, you know, these guys put their lives on the line day in and day out for our community and, you know, they need to be compensated fairly, that's why I'm hoping that something is done for them. But, you know, I'm very hopeful that the state really does help us with more recruiting and retention funding. I mean, it's an incentive for them to stay, you know, so I'm hoping that we get that support again. You know, and not, just real quick, not to keep on this, is you know that the state had approved the return to work and that was only a three-year thing, which we're coming up next year as the end of that, so that could also affect people that have, that have returned back to work that were retired. So I'm hoping that they do something with that to help us to be able to keep what we have, you know, so there's a lot that's in play, you know, I just ask for your support in trying to keep what we have.
Thank you. And with that being said, I agree with you with the return to work. I think, I think it was a poorly put together plan, they didn't look at the long-term effects. And I did reach out to our superintendent representative before the session and address that issue that, hoping that they would think it up because, yeah, it's good for three years, but then you boost up your staff and then it happens after three years. And I know there's a lot of sheriff life after three years. I don't know who came up with that plan, but they obviously didn't reach out to sheriffs or chiefs or anybody else. And one last question, Chair. What is your current starting pay for your deputies right now?
So right now, if you're certified, it's twenty-two fifteen as a, as a, just being certified with one, up to one year of experience. And then it's broken down based on your years of service and as being certified. It goes up based on the years of certification. Non-certified, I believe, is at nineteen, nineteen-twenty, something like that. I don't have the exact number, but that's for uncertified.
Thank you, and this is the last one. Mr. Dan that spoke earlier, I did meet with him and, yeah, he was very pleased with the response out there on Lance Drive. He was showing me exactly where they sit at, what they do, and it is a bad area and he was very, very appreciative of your guys' department's response to that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Flores? Thank you, sir. Was that it? Thank you, sir. Moving on to next one, our assessor's budget is on vacation, so we have Mr. Tureta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members, and I would just like to say we do have two budgets, general budgets and the reappraisal budget. We're pretty much in a flat budget right now. The only increases that I, that we requested was actually supplies due to the cost of supplies that are increasing throughout the years, and that's on both of them, on the four-nine-nine and the four-oh-six budget. And the publishing, we're just asking a small increase. One of the things that we, that we requested for that is because this year, we actually publish the, our notices through, through the Silver City Daily Press. And what happens is we do share the cost with Capron County. And last year, they took care of it, so it's this year, we, we'll take care of that deal with the publishing. And those are the only two increases that we have here for, for the assessor's budget. Everything else, we're pretty content on how we're doing our job and so on, and that's all, I stand for questions on that.
Questions, Commissioners? Shelly?
I just have a question. Mr. Chairman and Mr. Tureta, thank you. Last meeting, maybe the work session, we had a presentation from, I thought they were called Eagle Services or something, to improve data gathering for, to assist the assessor's office. Is that going to be a request from the assessor's office or is it somewhere else?
As a matter of fact, I will be yield to our county manager if you would please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have been working with Mr. Heel and if you recall, there were different options. And so she is working with Eagle and determining the exact option that she wants to proceed with. And then what we had talked about doing was splitting the costs between the assessor's budget, the four-nine-nine reappraisal budget, and then also taking a portion out of the planning department. It's not reflected today in anything that you're looking at because that can be utilized in both the assessor as well as code enforcement, mapping, so it can serve both. So we would look at splitting those costs. It will be in your prelim budget. I'm just waiting on final cost figures.
So would that be an increase in their planning budget?
Yes, sir. I just don't have those numbers today.
Well, what I heard was it was a hundred and twenty thousand, right?
Roughly, yes.
Roughly a hundred and twenty thousand. Okay. Any other questions?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, the Chairman and Board members, and have a great day. Moving on to our clerk, Ms. Holby?
As far as the clerk's budget, which is the four-one-of-four, I am requesting an increase in our postage due to a bill that passed in twenty-twenty-three, which is HB4 relating to elections. We're going to need to get an increase in the postage. I can get you a copy of that HB bill if you would like, and it's due to an automatic voter registration and update registration provision, so we're going to need to get an increase in that portion of our budget as well as to pick this out of our appus. Also, in our printing and publishing, we'd like to get an increase. We have figured out if the SRS is going to pay for the printing of this, these documents, so we're going to consolidate that with this budget. I'd also like to ask for an increase in our training budget. Equipment maintenance, I'd like to ask for an increase in that. We have to put the numbers into this system, so we'll have to add that. The increase in our maintenance and equipment, we'd like to ask for an increase with that because we do assist our public judge with her. I don't even have any, her being in front of our systems as well as the civic clubs and then as well as cameras in our appus. As far as our four-one-of-five, which is our beer directions, I'd like to ask for an increase on our telephones because we'd like to get some telephones for the appus. In our printing and publishing, I'd like to ask for an increase in that portion due to the fact that we do need to upgrade some signage in our appus and we need to replace some of our permanent location signs. And we'd also like to ask for an increase in our equipment and maintenance fund because we'd like to add a new, input a new electric system, cortex might go into the system, into our system. And that's pretty much our budget for both our four-one-of-five and our four-one-of-four. And I stand for any questions.
Or Probate?
No. We, usually the probate judge does not present, her budget stays fairly flat unless there's any increases in her maintenance contracts or anything, but it stays flat.
She did mention she was asking for a flat budget.
She, flat budget? Okay. Moving on to our treasurer, Mr. Khan.
Chairman, want some commissioners? For the treasurer's office, I'm looking at the printing and publishing. I'm hoping for that to stay flat, but I noticed last fiscal year, it was a little less than what I normally keep. I'm hoping to keep that at a ten thousand budget item just for the purposes. I don't know if the tax bills with the master's touch is going to increase, so I need to make sure that I have some money budgeted for that increase if they do increase the bill for those that they print for us. I'm also looking for next year for the master's touch to send the deliquent notices. This would help, normally we run those deliquent notices each year and it does use substantial amount of paper and office supplies like envelopes and ender envelopes. This should help reduce the number of supplies being used next year, so I'm hoping to utilize their service for our delinquency notices we have to send between May and June per state statute. On the office supplies, since we are going to be, what I just mentioned with sending our deliquent notices, it does use a substantial amount of our supplies such as envelopes, ender envelopes. I do have to replenish the cost and restock on envelopes that we send throughout the year. And just because of the increase of office supplies, I also want to ask to keep my office supply budget at four thousand. On mileage and per diem, I'm asking for a five hundred dollar increase. It just seems like I do attend all the New Mexico County conferences and it just seems like I come a little short. I just want to add five hundred dollars to that just so I keep within budget. For non-capital equipment, I'm asking for a six thousand dollar increase. This will just be for, instead of me having to replace computer systems within the treasurer's office, I did get with the IT department with Director Baca and I feel like it would be better to update our RAM memory so our systems are running a little bit faster and more productive for the public. So they're not thinking or, by increasing the RAM, it should help with their performance with, with us receiving property taxes and other revenue within the office. I'm also looking at ref, finishing replacing the receipt printers as some of it has been depreciated and looking at updating our tax bill, and this will be also an increase that I didn't ask under the printing and publishing, but doing a barcode on the tax bill so when a taxpayer comes and they're paying their property tax bill, I have a scanner which barcodes the, it scans the property tax and it brings, it automatically pops up the property tax account. Instead of us having to type it in, it'll be more efficient and faster for us to get our taxpayers who are paying their taxes in and out of the office. So instead of us having to type that in, we just barcode, we scan it, they pay, and they're out. So that would just help with the overall efficiency on the payment method there. Everything else within the treasurer's budget will remain flat except for those items. Carrying on to solid waste, I am asking for a postage increase from eight to ten thousand, that's just for the increase of postage. Office supplies, I am asking for, for three thousand. Before, she's had a twelve hundred budgeted, but just again, because of costs, everything going up, she normally runs a little, she goes over that budget, so I'm just asking just to replenish that so she don't go over. For the non-capital equipment for solid waste, just predicting for fiscal year twenty-six, I'm looking to replace her, the department's receipt printers, increase the RAM memory on that for performance, and possibly looking at an COTEN utility upgrade within that system, which would roughly go without those, end up about twenty-five thousand. Other than that, the rest of the solid waste budget will remain flat, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I guess I just, just, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Khan? The solid waste is part of your budget because they're, they're the ones who generate some additional revenue or?
It's just that, Chairman wants it. Commissioner Shelly, it, solid waste is just, is an additional sub-department within the county that is housed in the treasurer's office, and I oversee the solid waste as well as manager web.
It's just the collections part, then? The billing and the collections part is in his department, that's the only piece.
Okay, thank you. I just had that question, that's all, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you. So moving on, what am I supposed to say? What?
Some of the last meeting that was mentioned, that you might want to talk about projects that you have or desires that you might want to have in the budget, so that's why we just listed you out so you can give us your thoughts.
I remember. Right now, I'm good. Commissioner Medina?
I'm good for right now. I just want to thank all the department directors for their reports. It's really interesting to see what you guys' demands and needs and increases are. You never take into consideration that, even listening to Mr. Khan, that two thousand dollar increase in postage fees, you know, when I go to the post office and pay now whatever it is, fifteen cents more a stamp, and you never take into consideration. Guys who do public safety, Mr. Anzola, I mean, there's a need to make sure you guys are safe and kept safe and kept well. And everybody asks, and everyone asks here presenting their budget requests, it shows that you're the backbone of the organization of the county, and I want to tell you guys, I really appreciate it because it seems like you put a lot of work into this and it makes our jobs, our jobs much easier. Thank you guys so much. That's all about, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
I also really appreciate the attention to detail that you all put into the budget planning process and your request. I know it's a lot of work and I guess when our county manager said to think about priorities, I just was recalling at a recent meeting, I think it was Commissioner Medina, said something about the greatest good for the greatest number, like how can we serve the citizens and the county to the best of our ability? And of course, safety is always paramount and, which includes law enforcement, it also includes fire and emergency planning. We've spent some time talking about code enforcement and fire risk, and I think those are important. I hear that a lot from constituents, that they're concerned about those issues. So that's important to me. I think roads is another one of those things that benefits. I think roads is another one of those things that benefits everyone, so that's always a popular topic for people out in the community. I also hear from, from people on a regular basis that what benefits families in Grant County benefits everyone. So it's always good to think about what kind of services we're providing for families. And of course, that, that is safety, it's also roads. You know, we don't really get into the, the education realm very much, but I think parks and, you know, like the football field, things that benefit children are important. I think we all feel better when we look around and we see a clean environment, like signage is important, and not having a lot of litter and having nice roads, it's, it's a boost to our morale. So I think about that. You know, if ever there's any way that the county can be a leader when it comes to moving towards clean energy, I would be interested in that with, you know, maybe more electric vehicles, helping out with any kind of charging or solar projects, there's a lot of grant money available for that sort of thing. So I always keep that in my mind. And finally, the other thing that I have from constituents about, and I've mentioned it before, is with code enforcement and animal control and animal welfare. So county manager, Wabata, are going to talk more about that. But that's one of those things that benefits a lot of people, too. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. I do appreciate everybody working on the budget. I know it's hard work on the budget. I know these are not just wants but needs, and I wish we as a commission could just say, everybody can have whatever they, what they're requesting, but unfortunately, like Chairman Ponson said, sometimes we just have to stick to the basics because that's what we have right now. But hopefully, we can give a lot or approve a lot, what everybody has asked for. And I would just say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Shaly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reiterate what others have said. Thank you so much for all you do and for the work put in and thought into the budget and the consideration. It's obvious that everyone is trying very hard to live within the revenues our county, our rural county can generate, and I appreciate that. My comments, this, I mentioned it earlier, but if, if there's anything we can do within our budget to, I really appreciate several departments who have been recognized, rewarded for liability management throughout the last few months. And it seems to me that's one area where we get a lot of bang for our buck. Sometimes it includes some additional investment upfront to achieve those results, but the results pay for themselves many times over. And one, I did attend, I was going to save this for Commissioner Reports, but I'll go ahead and mention it now. I attended an opioid addiction prevention webinar that was available on Tuesday, and in that webinar, two county commissioners, one from Florida, one from Nebraska, reported on extraordinary results they've seen. You know, we, most of the time, the money we invest is in response to problems that occur, and in this, so this, they've taken a more proactive approach, and that's what the webinar was about, introducing a program that they have greatly made a great impact on opioid addiction and prevention rather than treatment and having our law enforcement and medical emergency response. Workers have to respond to that problem in a reactive way. And they mentioned, they were presenting, it was, it may have been a little bit of marketing for this program directed by Goldfinch Health, I believe was the name, where they, in their counties, they've, the county commission has taken a leadership role in encouraging the use of this program. And it, part of the program, I mean, it could be as, it can be a more, a bigger education program throughout our county, but it is also something that can be incorporated into our benefits package for county employees to help them reduce their hospitalization stays when they're in need of a surgery. And, and basically, it's a health-based improvement program in, that if, if one of our employees gets scheduled for surgery, they have the option, they're not forced to, but they have the option of utilizing this, this program to, which has been extremely effective in not minimizing the amount of, of pain medications, opioid pain medications prescribed, and utilizing those. And, and so it's, it's both an educational program. I guess I have to say, too, that they, they stated that 97% of opioid addiction start with a prescription drug that's utilized, usually in the hospital stay. And, and so anyway, this might be something we could consider in our, by our HR manager and the county manager, as something that is a liability for our entire community management program. So I threw it in there with, with that idea. Anyway, I was very appreciative of the webinar and what I learned there, and I'll leave that at that. And as I said, I know that liabilities of all kinds are fraught. I'm going to mention a little bit more of that in my report from the New Mexico Counties Association Legislative Regional Meeting that I attended. But that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So yours?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In regards to your budget overall, right now, it is a flat budget. We didn't make any increases. In regards to the manager's budget, that's also remaining flat. You've been overly generous with helping us navigate through the rebuild of the financial system and the finance staff. So once we can get those positions filled, I think we'll be in a really good place. So ours remains flat as well. I do want to mention, I've been working closely with Ms. Menos, and she has been working with Valiant, who is our compensation consultant, and so she's had several conversations with them about helping us with some policy and some guidance to better manage our compensation plan and how we can move our staff through the compensation plan in a manner in which that we can afford. That's been really difficult to try to meet some of the lofty goals that we had in mind whenever we adopted that plan. So when we present you the prelim budget, we will talk about those things. One thing to keep in mind, we can adjust non-union, non-bargaining unit employee salaries, but anything else has to be approved by the union for those bargaining unit employees. Although you mentioned an increase, you would think that would, would be, you know, they would be happy with that, but that's not always been the case here. So just keep that in mind, that that has to be negotiated with a wage opener. So other than that, if you have any questions, I stand for those.
So moving on to next item, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Shaly, do you have a Commissioner Report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So I attended the New Mexico Counties Association Regional Meeting in TRC last Thursday, and just wanted to, I was very involved in looking at legislation during the session, and I'm just going to, I think you all have received a report in your email from them on the legislative session. There were a lot of bills, like 11, over 1,100 bills introduced, and 194 that were passed, and then some of them have been vetoed. Things that were on the New Mexico County Association's priorities, like we mentioned earlier today, law enforcement, recruitment, retention fund, they didn't approve as much in House Bill Two as we wanted, but they did allow for 1.6 million there. Another priority was prisoner reimbursement for our detention centers. We requested, I think, 10 million, and almost 5 million was approved. So some of our priorities were, some of the issues that have affected our tax, or have the potential to affect our tax revenues were not approved, so we have more work to do in that, in that area. One, but probably most important that really got my attention in that meeting is, is our, the New Mexico Counties Liability or Insurance Group reported there that there is, as you well know, a big concern about large lawsuit liabilities that have been extraordinary in our state. And so it behooves us all to do everything we can to avoid those kinds of situations, to the point that she even said, you know, we're going to have to consider potentially bankruptcy type, because some of these lawsuits are so large that they would basically bankrupt a county. And, and so that's something we should all be concerned about. The other part of my report is just, I'm, I'm a member, board member on the Grant County Soil and Water Conservation District, and we had a meeting Monday. I just wanted to report that due to the flood three years ago devastated a lot of our irrigation systems. One project is near completion that I just wanted to report out on, it's in Commissioner Flores's district, is the Bear Creek Flood Control Project. That's substantially complete. It was a big concern to quite a few residents and farms downstream of that project, so that's a great accomplishment, and it took longer, of course, than everyone anticipated. That's my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Flores.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just a few things for, for me to report on. I, I want to commend the, Mr. Andozola and his staff. I didn't get a chance to say it earlier, but I know it's a hard job. I, I've worked with detention officers my whole career, and for the Sheriff's Department, I really hope that we can look at increasing their pay. It's tough to go to work in a facility like a detention center and get $16 an hour, because some of these officers, they can go out and work at Walmart or another type of organization for either the same pay or more, and not have to deal with working graveyard and deal with everything that happens in a detention center. Until you've been there, or you've experienced it, people just don't have, have the concept of how hard it is. So thank you for, for both departments, and I hope that we can do everything to increase your pay. The other thing I'd like to recognize is, besides the detention officers, is a couple weeks ago, it was, I know the Telecommunicators Dispatchers Week, and recently I had a chance to revisit an incident, and I would just like to recognize two dispatchers, they all should be recognized, but two dispatchers in particular, Briann and Emeny, Briann Dalton and Emeny Villanueva, in listening to the call, I think this call showed what the epitome of a dispatcher is and what they should do. And I think it even goes to maybe being part of a training program for how dispatchers should react in an emergency or crisis situation like they responded to. They remain calm, and dispatchers, like officers, detention officers, they rarely, rarely get recognized. The only time they get recognized is for something bad. And this time, I'd just like to extend the recognition to them. The other thing is, and this is probably part of the budget that I should have mentioned earlier, but I would like to look at some things that probably belong in the ICIP I discussed with you earlier. One, being a Cliffheder Community Center, I know our county manager and Mr. Hogen are working hard on that right now. It's definitely something that's long overdue. They, they have a community center that's a world-class quasi hut. It's definitely, I think, dangerous, and more importantly, I think it affects the people there because in that community, they depend on telehealth, they depend on a library, somewhere to gather, they don't have it. But hopefully, we can at some point get something going for them. And another project is probably in the Colonia's portion of it, and I know you and I talked about it maybe a year or two ago, is the continuation of the sewer project in Indian Hills. I know they started on Kane, and they went up north on Arrowhead, and I know a lot of folks, when I was going door to door, they were mentioning, hey, can you find out what happened? We thought we're going to get it on the other roads that were going north. And I know I can talk to, to the county manager and the chair and discuss more about it, but that is definitely something on my radar to address, again, probably an ICIP issue. But thank you to those folks that don't get recognized, the county works, the road department, like Commissioner Stevens said, roads are a priority, because roads are something that attracts tourism, it attracts people that come over here, and if they see, I'm reiterating, what Commissioner Stevens said, if they see littering, weeds all over the highway, bumpy, not up-kept roads, they're probably not going to come back. So I, I know that the priority in Wind Canyon, especially the priority on Lance there in, by the county building, that, that is an excellent idea for first responders to come in, because there is a lot of people living in that area, but if we can just look into that, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Medina?
Just a couple of comments real quick. So, you know, being under a union contract's a very difficult place to be, especially in the cops, to salaries. Sheriff, me and you worked on the Bear Council, and when police officer sheriffs' pay was low, we, we pushed the municipality to push it up to 24 hours, to $24 an hour, and that was, that was a small municipality like Bear, and that was a shock to the entire community. We heard from other police departments that, how could you do that? Because everybody had to raise the bar now. Commissioner Flores, Commissioner Ponson, yourself, Sheriff, you Commissioner Foltis, Commissioner Ponce, yourself, Sheriff, you guys do deserve that money because, and you're right, you, you got a split second to make a decision, and we, everyone, the rest of the world has two weeks to make that decision on what you did wrong. I do support that, I want you to know. On everything else, I've had the opportunity recently to work with the financial department, with Andrea and Ms. Rosco and, and everybody else, and the county manager. You guys have come a long way. It's, it's changing, it's positive, it's a good thing, and I really want to appreciate all the work that's coming into it. County manager, I've seen you pull your hair out almost because of the issues that we had previously, two, three, four financial people back, but it seems like you guys are on the right track, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing. P.O.s come out quick, there, it seems that your staff is up and running, and they're really productive and receptive, and it, it's good to work with people like that, so I want to tell you guys all, thank you very much. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, on that topic of appreciation, I just was thinking, last weekend, I was involved with the Kiwanis egg hunt that they put on every year, and across the way at Golf Park was the Continental Divide Trail Days, and then we have tour of the Gila, and there's, there's a lot to be proud of here in our community. I noticed too, the other day, that there was, well, I guess it was just yesterday, that we had a, a gas leak nearby, and I saw fire and police and the gas company, but everyone responded in a really professional way, and it, it just makes you grateful for all the people who are just showing up every day, doing their job, including all of you, and I think that's it for my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. For me, real quick, I ended up with House Memorial Nine. It was introduced by Representative Luis De Rasses and signed by the Speaker of our, Speaker of the House, Mr. Javier Martinez, and it was declared January twenty-ninth, the forty-ninth Annual Grant County Day there, the House of Representatives. So, I'm going to leave this up with county manager up front, if you guys want to read what, what was introduced and, and have it there, so you guys can see that, we always get one. So, thank you to our House Speaker and our Representative De Rasses for doing that. One of the things I want to talk about a little bit is, is our enforcement on fireworks. If, you know, if all possible, if we can look, we haven't had any, and it's probably because we haven't asked for them, but we haven't had any stats on number of complaints on fireworks. I think that, that will help us in the future to, you know, help determine what, what we're looking at. When people look at fireworks, a lot of the times, they go into the, the fire and the drought, and it, which is, you know, it's very important. We, we try to prevent all that. But the other parts that we forget to neglect is some of our veterans, how, how that affects them, how that affects our, our animals, you know, our dogs, our cats, and every, it seems every year during fireworks season, you know, you, you start seeing posts where, my dog ran out the door, my dog got out of the fence because of the fireworks. So, I would love, if you could, Sheriff, I truly appreciate, you know, us getting some kind of stats, what enforcement we're doing, maybe even looking at how we're going to enforce some of these calls, because usually, I think that there's a lot of calls, especially starting here soon, so it'd be great, if you don't mind, I'd appreciate that. The other thing, I had one of my constituents call you. I don't know if he did, and talking about the trash on Highway one eighty, the uncovered load, you know, and he brought up some, some very good points as far as how we sit here as a county, or even a silver city, or everybody talking about economic development, bringing in people, doing this, but one of the first things they see on Highway one eighty is all the trash. He was asking, and I told him to call you, to get with you, as far as enforcement on uncovered loads, what we can do, and the trash, and I, I do know, bless you, I do know that there's always people out there cleaning it, and it looks very nice for a day or two, and then at the end of the, the day or the week, it's, it's back to what it was. So, I don't know if he reached out to you, but I'm just letting you know, he was told to reach out to you, but something we might be able to look at there on that, on the trash on the highway enforcement. I've talked to you about Creme Road. One thing that, that I should have mentioned is, we have our, in, in the budget, we have Baton Park, we have our building that we used to rent. The, and I have some ideas on, on maybe on the money for that, but looking at it, because I think the liability of us renting it how it was, I think the proper steps are taking it, taken to reduce that liability and not renting it. But I, and I saw some pictures last time, and I was going to bring it up last time, guys did a very good job painting it. I'm not sure where we're at as far as the restrooms, kitchen area, or how, where we're at to try to lease it or do something else with that building. I don't need the answer now, but on Monday, and it'd be good, so we can do something else instead of just having the, the building sitting there. It might be worth investing some money. Remind me, I have an idea for you, and then I'll, I'll take it from the citizens down the road. So, anyway, if we can really look at that, and I, I'd really like to see some of that You know, one thing that, that, and, and I go back to this, and, and I understand, and I support a sheriff's department, I understand their pay, but sometimes, as a commissioner, sometimes as a chair, and of course, it's a body here that we all make the decision together, whether it's for or against, you know, it brings me back to your prior minutes, sheriff's administration, that one year, we had big old presentations, we had this, we had that, bringing up the pay. I know you weren't involved in it, I don't think any of your administration was involved in it, and we bent over backwards to try to get them better paid. We came around here, not too long ago, we approved a contract, we're getting them better paid. But sometimes, as a commissioner, you got to look at certain things, and, and yes, that was in law enforcement. You know, we don't get into law enforcement or, or for the pay because we know it's low pay, you know, but we do expect to, to better further our families, to, to do special things to better provide for our families. I, I understand all that. But one thing that, that I do really want to look at this budget, and I'm telling our county manager and our staff, is our detention center. You know, twenty-two dollars an hour is a great thing. Sometimes, we have to take a step back and say, yeah, we support our law enforcement officers, and it's not, not about supporting them. But when I turn around and look at our detention center at sixteen, fifteen dollars an hour and their retention, I think that sometimes, we have to focus our attention on, on other places for, for the time being. And my like, what the other commissioners mentioned, yeah, I'd love to be able to turn around and get everybody in the county better paid to, to, because they, you know, you guys have been doing a good job, but I'd really like to see us really look and, and pay attention to our detention center, what we can do. I know I mentioned about our union, the county manager mentioned that, well, I hope that they take a step back and say, hey, there are members, if it makes them better, then we can do certain things, because it's going to all hinge on, on what we have, what we can do, and, and also on the union as to how they're going to take this. So, I'd really like to see our budget process take a look at this. I think, you know, our detention center has, has been doing a, a, a good job, doing a, a lot better than, than what it was four, five years ago. I don't know how long, Joseph, how long have you been there?
I've been here fifteen years, I've been an administrator for, for a half.
Four years, so, you know, things have gotten better, a lot better in those, in those four years, so I'd really like to look at and, and talk to our commissioners, really think about that, and, and look at what we have and what they have, because it is hard. And I don't know who made the comment, you could go work at Walmart, McDonald's, you know, make fifteen dollars an hour already. You know, you're not, I mean, I guess maybe you're looking at mandates for, for food, but, you know, you don't have the responsibility that you have as a detention officer. So, I'd, I'd like to really look at some of that and, and dive into, into that a little bit more on that, in that area. Budget, you know, our budget's a, a process that takes time, you know. You've heard all the capital outlays, I can, can go back to Mr. Baca, I think he had like three, four hundred, a little over three hundred thousand, close to four hundred thousand dollars in, in wanting things, you know. You go into certain things, we, we talk about approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the presentation we got. There's a lot of things that, that, that we look at, and we try to do our best with it, but I think that this year, in my mind, in my opinion, and, and hopefully, you guys take a look at it, is, is look at other places where we can also cut. You know, I, I understand prices are going up, I think we can do better in, in some areas. You know, I, I don't even know what we have coming for this year. You know, our, our clerk's office with the elections, I don't know what's, what's going to hit us this year, I haven't kept up with all that. But there's a lot of things, and I hope that, that our staff and, and everybody says, looks at, you know, we only have so much money. That's why I sort of look at a lot of who stayed under budget, who stayed within the budget, who's looking at a, at a flat, uh, uh, who's, who's, who needs to be rewarded for staying under their budget, because there's a lot of projects that they have too, and, and I'd like to see that, that they fulfill what they need to, to their constituents, just like we do. We sit up here, we have the budget, it's easy for us five to vote on a project and say, give us this money so we can do this, just sort of like I talked to our county manager. You know, what can we do with Baton Park? Well, if five of you vote, we're good. The others may not have that luxury that we have. So, I'd like to really, for our commission to really look at some of these things, really look at our budget, dive in, and, and also look at some of these cuts, and let them be able to do what they need to do. And one last thing, I really appreciate our, our finance department, our county manager, you know, all the work that they've done. If, to me, it feels like I've been working through this for three, four years, as far as our, our budget and, and things that we hadn't been done, and, and our manager trying to catch up. She stressed, you know, our, our finance department changing, but I think we're, we're looking a lot better than what we were a year ago. I think that it's just going to continue. But at the end of the day, I think that some of our staff, some of our elected officials need to understand, maybe it hasn't been communicated, because I have gotten a lot of concerns, maybe it hasn't been communicated to them of how grave some of this stuff was, and some of the time that it's taken for them to fix is, some of the time that they're not available to, to do some, some things or communication. But during the process, our budget process, I think what we need to do is, is we need to multitask, to be able to help our other departments get, get on that budget and, and see what we can do. So, that's what I'm going to say, but I appreciate all you guys, appreciate your staff with our budget, and let's see what it goes by, where it goes from here, and hopefully, we, we do get a good budget and we can help every department we can. The other part to this that, that I want to talk to, and Commissioner Shally did talk a little bit about is, is the Board of Directors of New Mexico Counties. You know, I've been, I don't know how long I've been on that board, I think I've gone through two elections to being on the Board of Directors for New Mexico Counties, but I'm starting to, you know, go down here as far as my time being here, so I'm just going to tell you that I'm not going to seek reelection, so elected officials, you know, I'm not going to be asking for your vote, I'm done. I've had a great time there, we've, we've brought up some great issues, we've voted some great, on some great issues, we, we've talked to our legislators, we, we've tried to do the best we can for all thirty-three counties, and I've met great people, all thirty-three counties, or somebody I can always call on and, and ask them for help because of, of the reporter that you build with them and the things, so, you know, I don't know, I've been there four years, maybe two, I don't know, two terms. So, I'm just going to let everybody know that, or elected officials, anybody that wants to try and get on the board, that includes our commissioners also, anybody that wants to jump in that election, and I don't know when my last meeting will be, or if it already was. I know there's a meeting tomorrow in Alamo, or I'm part of it too, I'm tired of traveling a lot, you know, going up to, up north, going up to the east part of the state, you know, it does take a lot of time and, and all that, but I really appreciate everybody that's elected to serve on that board for the last two elections, and I think it's time for me to step down and share the wealth. You guys, you know, get in there, learn and, and do that. It's going to be a great experience, you're going to meet some great people, you're going to learn a lot about counties, you're going to learn a lot about the bills that are going to go through and what to support, what not to support, and be a, a, a advocate for our county, and not only our county, but the other thirty-two counties. So, whoever would like to do that, I think there was a letter sent to all the elected officials, you have to let her know by the twenty-ninth, if you're interested in it, so she can do and hold her elections. So, other than that, did anybody else have anything else that they forgot? No? Thank you, guys, and meeting is adjourned.